Good evening and welcome to Sletta Independent School District's emergency meeting of the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the Board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comments sign up cards show the rules for participating. Legally, the Board may listen but may not enter into discussion on any issue raised. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 4:33 PM. We have a quorum with Mr. Charlie Bustillos, Soltero Ramirez, Richard Kudair, Mike Rosales is running a little late, Connie Woodruff, Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Secretary Lucero, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas plan, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, indivisible.
Thank you.
There is no public comment this evening. So we'll get right to our action items. Item number one, information discussion and possible action regarding COV ID COVID-19 emergency.
President Ochoa, members of the Board, guests, first of all, thank you for attending on such short notice. While we have, as a team and a staff, been monitoring the spread of the coronavirus-19 pandemic, it wasn't until recently that we became aware of a neighboring school district's intention to consider the closure of schools in response to the virus and in an effort to mitigate the virus. The El Paso Independent School District has determined that they will close all of their schools, not the following week, spring break, but the week of the 23rd through the 27th. That's a hard date. Canotillo ISD has also selected a hard date of March 23rd to return. The rest of the school districts we met with this afternoon at 1 o'clock have taken a more flexible and nimble approach, with the exception of the Socor Independent School District, who has also already decided to take a two-week school closure break following spring break or commencing on the 23rd of March. What we'd like to share with you is that after studying the problem and thinking about it, I think in a very deliberate, student-centered, and with the priority being the safety and security of our students, our faculty and staff, what we'd like to do is we'd like to close the district for one week following the spring break. But we'd also like to make sure that parents know that that is not a hard closure, but rather entering to an understanding covenant with our community that would allow us to make them aware of whether or not that needs to be extended an additional week or two additional weeks based on what we know at that time. So rather than just set a hard date, what we do want to do is take that week off and then at some point around Wednesday, Thursday of that week, consider all the factors and variables and then notify the Board and then quickly send out a letter to all pertinent parties as to our intentions, including the possibility, the real possibility, that school may be closed until April 6th. And then again, around April 3rd or 4th, consider all of the information at our disposal and then decide whether or not another week is warranted, but try and do it in a very thoughtful, deliberate, and intentional way, rather than try and speculate as to how many weeks it will take before it's safe for students, faculty, and staff to come back to work. I think that gives us the flexibility. It gives us an opportunity, obviously, to do a very thorough cleaning of all classrooms, buses, equipment, organized areas, but more importantly, it gives us an opportunity to meet with healthcare professionals throughout the region to determine when and if it's safe to have students, faculty, and staff return to work and to learn. And at this point, the entire cabinet, who should be commended, they've really been working hard for about the last week and a half on this, and they've done an exceptional job. Robert Basurto has taken the lead in terms of the safety and security of our students and with the support of Mr. Vasquez and our instructional folks, Ms. Leeper, who's not with us this evening. We believe that, under the circumstances, that would be the best route to take at this point. And we're available for questions if you have any questions, or it does not require Board action. But we've always been very, very transparent and have always wanted to communicate with Board members. And even though it's an administrative decision, we're here to support the Board and want to make sure that the Board is comfortable with what we're recommending as the plan of action.
Mr. President, I would just like to talk about a phone call that I got this afternoon just to make sure that our constituency knows that we're listening to their concerns and the things that they're thinking about our closure. And so this phone call, they basically had said that there were a couple of reasons that they feel like that we should be very careful in closing our schools. And the first one being that a lot of the parents who will have to continue to work will have no place to put their children. And in the event of that happening, a lot of them will end up going with their grandparents who are in the older population, who are the ones who are most at risk for the virus. And so he was concerned that we take this into consideration when we make our decisions as far as closing schools. So that's from a constituent. Thank you.
Mr. Rosales?
One of the reasons I was running late, I had two phone calls, coincidentally, regarding the employees, two of them, weren't aware of our meeting. But one of them brought up a question, and you might be answering this question, the purpose of employee pay. Do the emergency measures that the President's taken from a national and state level, would these people be in a position to have to make up for lost time, Dr. La Torre? Or would that be answered later on in the meeting?
Yeah, the next two agenda items that are action items and that are the responsibility of the Board would be the Board to consider adopting resolutions that would allow us to continue and compensate those hourly employees because this incident is no fault of their own. And the Board has the authority to do that. And that would be item two. And item three, that would allow us to take care of them through March.
The other question or point that I'd like to bring out is a matter of question. For those parents that do have children that have breakfast in the morning, so on and so forth, what is the game plan there?
We will be sending out a pretty detailed communicate, parents, faculty, staff, you, of course, and in that communicate outlines all of the sites, school sites and centers that will be distributing breakfast and lunch for as long as the school district is closed.
I think that takes care of me. Thank you.
And I will say that if the participation is lower than what we expect or what we believe we should see, we may have to revisit that and add additional sites because it may be a challenge with transportation, even getting to the food. And to your point, a lot of them are going to be with daycare providers who may or may not be able to drive a vehicle. I think that's why we were so, we understand the predicament we're in and that we have to be responsive, but under our model, this wouldn't be, we wouldn't do this until there was actually a reported case of coronavirus in the community. But things happen and there's been a state of emergency issued by the Governor and some of our city officials have indicated that it would be in the best interest of public safety to go ahead and do this now. But it could be a very long, could be a very long road.
Dr. La Torre, what about the sports? They're not gonna, I had also a constituent ask, are they going to be allowed to practice? Are sports completely canceled?
I think the UIL has asked that for at least two weeks, there be no practice or competition. Is that correct?
Yes. So, Mr. Bustillos, good afternoon. We got correspondence today from UIL and we're going to suspend all play for two weeks. We are suspending practice next week and we want to first get with all the ISDs so we're all on the same page for the second week.
Okay.
So next week, we're good. EPSD's on board, Socor's on board. And then we'll monitor it at the end of next week. And then if everybody's still on board with no practice, because we don't want to make sure that nobody gets an athletic advantage, then we'll follow suit with everybody. Okay? So we are monitoring that.
Yeah, those were the questions to see where we're going.
That's correct.
So the following week?
Yes.
You'll assess it?
We'll assess at the end of this week and as long as all the ISDs are on the same page about no practice and we will follow suit and we want to make sure it's equitable.
Now, as you, I'm sure, know that we have no authority when it comes to travel teams, Babe Ruth, Little League, Pony League. So you may see people out there practicing, but it isn't a high school activity.
Okay. Are they still allowed to use the facilities?
Our facilities?
If they put in the right paperwork?
We've put in paperwork that does not provide access to any enclosed facilities. I don't know whether or not it addresses fields. I'll find out for you.
Okay.
Mr. Soltero?
Dr. La Torre and President Ochoa and Board members, one of the areas of concern I have is on the academic side of this issue. Visiting with Dr. Chacon last week and Ms. Manchaca and Dr. Kennedy talking about the review and testing schedule, talking about we were doing this, we were our Saturday, you know, tutoring, boot camp type thing. We need, our schools need every minute of instruction. Our schools need every opportunity to make our students successful. And the other part of this, and I'm glad to see so many educators out here, is that it's more than just the instruction. It's the routine. It's the discipline that comes with having that routine. Because our kids aren't going to come back in two, three weeks if they're out that long. It's going to take you a while to find, to get everybody back on track. And so I'm extremely concerned about that portion of it. I'm extremely concerned with the loss of instructional time. And, you know, there's just no more time at the end of the school year. I mean, we can't go any further. And so I would ask that the Board give serious consideration is that we write a letter from the district asking the superintendent to do it and then asking the Governor, asking TEA, and asking our legislative delegation that we waive all testing, including EOC. That all testing be waived and that the way that they calculate scores and comparisons and stuff like that, that we not do that this year. This is a different world. And depending on who we talk to, and I was watching the President's news conference this afternoon, you know, I'm hearing things, you know, all the way through June type stuff. Our students will be long gone by then, you know, I mean, they will be, you know, they're ready for summer. And so I'm a little concerned about that. So I would ask for some consideration be given to that. Because if not, then the schools are going to have to come back. The administrators, the teachers are going to have to come back and they're going to have to try to make things happen. It's not fair to them.
I agree. Thank you.
That's a very good point. I think that needs to be addressed.
And just going along with Mr. Ramirez, has TA given any kind of input as to if the delay lasts more than the next couple of weeks? Because we know that if it goes three weeks, the very week afterwards is EOC, English 1 and 2, which literally they would come back from three weeks off and have to take a test. So have they released any statements at this point?
April 7th, no. As a matter of fact, Mike Marath, I think, dialed in today with all of the superintendents in the room. But he was somewhat myopic about whether or not closure is the right thing to do. Didn't touch on assessments, but I'm sure that your sentiments are shared across the state by many, many school districts. So I would at least hope that if they do take the assessment, that that assessment and those scores not be made public, that they be, if we have to have it, that they be made available to the school district so that the school district can use it as benchmark data. But data that we know has been influenced and affected by this absence of instruction and that you can't just turn the switch on and turn it off. So I'd agree with both of you.
Dr. La Torre, also too, I think as part of that letter is that the formula or the methodology for us to accomplish that, that your group was TALAS?
Mm-hmm. TALAS and TUC.
Yeah. TALAS, TUC, and by the way, and TASB as well.
Absolutely.
That they make, they play a role in helping to, again, to define this and see what's fair and what's reasonable.
Yes, sir. I'll stay close to all of them.
I just want to add, just to do a piggyback on you, I haven't been in contact with NASBA and I would be, I will be making a call in the morning because we do need a complete support from throughout the state.
I just want to say that I've been in contact with members of our delegation. So you're right on target with that, Mr. Ramirez, to work to request a waiver. And I think your idea is excellent to have our superintendent write a letter on behalf of the district. And if we can extend that offer out to the other districts, I think that would make it even stronger. It's not only the loss of instruction time in academia. It's the stress that our teachers, that our students are going to go through with all this disruption. So there's just a lot that's going to come into play. While this closure is definitely not going, it's not comfortable and it's not something that we want. We like our kids here. We keep them safe here. It's right in line with what the city and the county and the state is doing. So hopefully, we can mitigate some of the potential, potential disease that can potentially, hopefully, we can mitigate the cause or the amount of sickness that might occur.
The spread.
The spread by keeping our, by doing our due diligence and doing our part and staying home and doing what we need to do in order to be able to come back and do what we do best.
I just want to ask one more thing. And it's kind of more of an imploring that as we move forward, if things do get worse, and we all hope that it gets better before it gets worse, that there be some kind of unity among our districts and county and city leaders. I know that we all have our own districts and we all have our own agendas and own things. But at the end of the day, we're all trying to provide the best education for all of our students and the safety of all of our students and staff. And so when one district announces and then another district announces, another district, there's a lot of confusion among our constituents, among our families, among our faculty and students. And as difficult as it is sometimes to work together, as we all like to compete on the field and in different academic events, when it comes to things that are crisis and things that affect our entire community, I do implore not only Dr. La Torre, but all the superintendents and all community leaders, including ourselves of other boards, to really work together and say, how can we give a unified message that is on point for everybody and it's easy to understand for everybody so that there is no confusion? Because there's enough confusion going on in the media, in social media, and everything else. And so we, as leaders of our community, need to really work together and get past our differences to say, what's best for everybody? And let's give a uniformed message as we move forward with this crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Kudair.
Item number two.
Purpose?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay. Go ahead.
President Ochoa, members of the Board, pursuant to policy DEA, please consider approving the superintendent's declaration of a Sletta ISD emergency closure due to the public health emergency from the COVID-19 virus as the purpose for paying non-exempt full-time employees for their regular duty schedule during such emergency closure.
Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion?
I think this one is, I believe we're all on the same page on this one. We want to take care of our employees. We want to make sure that our employees are able to put food on the table and continue to have as much normalcy during this closure as possible.
Yes. So this is one of the items that I think we can reduce the stress on everyone. Nobody wants to go home and then not get paid. So, and that, like you said, this wasn't anybody's fault. It's just something that's happened to us and we have to deal with it the best we can. And I think this is one of the right things to do.
Excuse me if I sound ignorant, but this includes everyone, ancillary? Right across the board, Dr. La Torre?
The only group that was in danger of not being paid was ancillary. And so it would be your hourly employees. All other contracted employees? Because the terms and conditions of the contracts who proceed an emergency like this will continue to be paid. So that takes care of your teachers and administrators and professional staff. It's the hourly employees that we want to take care of. Ancillary, custodians, cafeteria, transportation.
That's a point of clarification I needed. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, President Ochoa.
Yes.
When we do, before we vote, I think we need the motion from a Board member and not just from the superintendent.
No. Yes.
Great. And also, it does cover the all full-time, non-exempt employees. So just to clarify, it's not necessarily, it's not the part-time employees.
Sure.
Okay. So who includes in that world of part-time employees?
I'll let.
Part-time employees would be considered anyone that does not receive benefits from the school district. And what that would mean is our crossing guards, our noon duty aides, those individuals. Part of this agreement is that we're allotting additional leave days because you can't pay hourly employees for hours not worked. And so what we're able to do to ensure our part-time employees are getting compensated, I mean, I apologize, our non-exempt employees are getting compensated, we are technically allotting additional leave days to them as a benefit. And so that's how we're able to compensate them is by giving them an additional, we'll just say, five days of leave time that they can take outside of what they would normally get as a benefit. And our part-time employees do not receive leave time.
I understand that. Okay.
And I understand that's a matter of federal labor law.
Let me ask a question also. How does that work then for the employees that come in to actually work?
That's a great question, Mrs. Woodruff.
During the week, you know.
For essential personnel, they will be paid at time and a half.
Okay.
May I ask a question relative to your point where you're going to give me extra leave?
Yes, sir.
The cross guards and all that, and those people who work, do that work, am I right?
They don't, part-time workers don't qualify for leave through TEA and TRS. So that's why we're not able to add that benefit to them. Now, one way that we could look at it in the future is possibly allowing them to work additional hours when we come back to make up for that. But we can't pay them for hours not worked.
How many people are we talking about here in round numbers?
I would give a rough estimate of maybe 100, 150.
Is there a way that we can have our part-time folks assist in the cleaning of the schools and the deep cleaning that we're going to do and things of that nature in order to be able to provide them some relief during this emergency as well?
We can definitely look at doing that. My only concern with that is there's special training that has to go into detailed sanitizing of campuses. And without them having the background knowledge of that, it would be quite difficult for us to do that. We also considered with us doing the drive-by child nutrition to give food, but they don't, many of them, most of them may not have food handlers carts. So we couldn't utilize that as an opportunity as well.
Ground cleaning? I mean, is there something that we can find for them to do during the week?
We can definitely work with Mario Rodriguez and we can find different ways for them to help that could potentially assist them in the event they wanted to work. Absolutely. We'll look at different options for them.
To follow up on what I asked initially, the nature of this emergency, and I understand rules, don't get me wrong, and I certainly don't want to circumvent, but it would be, in my estimation, would be something appropriate that we would undertake some kind of an effort because of the nature of this emergency that we help these people through, to give them a week, excuse me, a week off or what have you. We're talking money here. We're talking about, in many cases, they're retired. I know a couple of them that are retired and so this supplements their income. And if there's anything we could do to help them, I certainly would like to have you all take a look at that.
Absolutely. And I will get with Mario and I'm sure he can come up with different opportunities for them to work. Now, next week is spring break, so they wouldn't be working anyway. But the following week, in the event we do the closure, then I will get with Mario to make sure that we come up with opportunities for them and they can report to the service center with Mario.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Kudair?
President Ochoa, pursuant to policy DEA local, I ask that you approve the superintendent's declaration of a Sletta ISD emergency closure due to the public health emergency from COV ID-19 virus, the COVID virus, 19 virus, as a purpose for paying non-exempt full-time employees for their regular duty schedule during such emergency closure?
I have a second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. We have seven in favor, none opposed. Item number three, parameters for employee pay during emergency closure.
President Ochoa, members of the Board, the administration is recommending pursuant to policy DEA your approval as parameters of paying employees during the COVID-19 emergency closure that payment will be to non-exempt full-time employees during only those days the district is closed for such emergency. And that to effectuate such payment, each such employee shall be granted additional days of paid leave equivalent to the number of days that the district is closed for such emergency less any day or portion of a day that the employee is required to work during such emergency and is paid by the district.
Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion?
I guess just a quick clarification, Dr. La Torre. How does this one differ from the last one?
It doesn't. There are tandem. You can't do one without the other. So this is getting your authority. You can't do one without the other, so this is getting your authority to give them additional leave days.
Okay. One's the pay and then this, okay.
Yes.
No problem. Sounds good.
All right. But if there's no further discussion, may I have a motion? Let's start reading this again.
It's the explanation I just gave.
Okay. President Ochoa, pursuant to policy DEA local, I ask that you approve, or ask the board to approve as the parameters of paying employees during the COVID-19 emergency closure, the payment will be to non-exempt full-time employees during only those days that the district is closed for such emergency and that to effectuate such payment, each such employee shall be granted additional days of paid leave equivalent to the number of days that the district is closed for such emergency, less any day or portion of a day that the employee is required to work during such emergency and is paid by the district.
We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. We have, the results are seven in favor, none opposed. If we have no further discussion, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Y'all enjoy your spring break. We'll see you sometime in the spring, summer of two thousand...